It'll be great.
We're we're making sure that I absolutely.
And what's the timeframe on that, like fifteen fifteen?
Yeah, that's not bad.
No.
Mm-mm. Are we ready? Okay. Good evening. It is now six o'clock on the sixth of August two thousand and twenty-four. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the planning board. The planning board is a seven-member board. Any special permit decision of this board requires a two-thirds vote. Two-thirds of a seven-member board is five. If only five members vote, the vote would have to be unanimous. Any decision on preliminary and definitive plans, approval not required, and proposed zoning amendments requires a majority vote of the full board. Any decision on scenic road permits requires a majority of the quorum present. Any person giving testimony must state their state and spell their name and provide their street address for the record. All questions from the public should be directed through the chair. This meeting is live and streamed on Sandwich Community Television's website and on local Channel Nine. This meeting is being recorded and will be available on the SCTV website at www.sandwichtv.org tomorrow. According to town bylaw, meetings are audio-recorded. If anyone intends to also record, kindly notify the chair. And we spoke earlier. Thank you for letting me know. And please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Okay, first item on the agenda is the review and approval of the minutes from the July second and July sixteenth two thousand and twenty-four meeting. Let's see.
Do you like a motion to approve?
Um, did anybody want to have any discussions about the minutes from the two different meetings?
I often make a motion, I tell.
Okay. Okay. I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes for the July second and July sixteenth two thousand and twenty-four minutes.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I didn't mean, I thought you were waiting for a motion. So, I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the July second two thousand and twenty-four and the July sixteenth two thousand and twenty-four planning board meeting.
I second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstain? Um, next on the agenda is submission of new plans. Uh, any submissions of new plans? Seeing none, we'll move forward. Um, old business, there is no old business to discuss. Oh, wait, it says there is no old business. There is no old businesses. Okay, yes, I was like, wait a minute, I recognize this couple here. Um, so we do have old business to discuss, and that would be the special permit application for eight and ten Cranberry Trail. Uh, just a reminder that the public hearing remains open. And, um, so at this time, I will open, uh, the matter up to Ralph and Leanne for an update.
Excuse me, before you do that, I'm going to recuse myself. Thank you.
The only update we have, which is for the board, is that we received the affidavit from, uh, from the applicant, which is one of the, uh, one of the requirements of the special permit. I just also wanted to point out to the board that this is a special permit. Uh, only five members are voting in the vote. Uh, if you do decide to vote generally, uh, the approval will require unanimous.
Okay. Um, so at this time, I would like to open this matter up to the applicant. Yes, thank you.
My name is Paul Hajian. I'm one of the owners with my wife, along with the architect who designed the plans. And the spelling of my last name is H-A-J-I-A-N. And this is about eight and ten Cranberry Trail. I presented, uh, our project, um, prior to this, but I can do a quick refresh for those folks who weren't at that meeting. We're proposing, um, at, uh, eight and ten Cranberry Trail to combine the properties. And, uh, I have the original, um, affidavit here for, which is an attestation or declaration of ownership of both properties. And, um, we're planning on building a two-car garage with a small home office attached to it. And, uh, we looked at, um, then building, uh, a five hundred and seventy-six square feet, accessory dwelling unit on the upper floor. Um, there's a stair communicating to that upper floor. Um, it has a single bedroom, uh, kitchenette, and one bathroom. And, uh, we have, uh, prior to this meeting, shown our plans to the Historic Commission, um, which they approved our concept and our design. And that was in keeping with the existing home that's at ten Cranberry Trail, which we renovated probably about ten or eleven years ago. We've both enjoyed being in Sandwich. And, um, I think since COVID, my wife has been living, uh, pretty much full-time, uh, here in the Sandwich community. I'm still working, so I'm not retired yet, but our plan is to now, um, age in place on this property and in this community. And hence the introduction of the two-car garage. When we first looked at the Cape, they said it never snowed here. Uh, that was wrong. And so, um, we, uh, we felt we needed the garage. And then the accessory dwelling unit would also provide us with some, uh, income if so, if we desire, as I then, um, retire and, uh, join my wife. I think, uh, we, uh, since the last meeting, we did receive, a draft plan of our septic design that meets Title V. It will be going under review, uh, by the Board of Health. To add that bedroom, which is required, our current septic is for a three-bedroom. Um, and so we would be expanding our existing septic design, modifying that with, uh, an additional distribution box, which will be for the ADU and that single bedroom and bath. And then there would be an additional leaching field that would be placed pretty much where the old leaching field was. That meets the current Title V requirements. And, um, that would be something that would then occur as we start to go through the building permit process. I think we're planning on building an energy-efficient home, um, with solar collectors on the roof, so that we're really trying hard to make this building both carbon-neutral as well as, uh, uh, net-zero in terms of its heating and, and, and heating and energy requirements. It would be great to do this, um, both for our retirement, but also as a kind of proof of concept, as well on the Cape, so that you can design something that's both, um, in keeping with the design of the Cape-style architecture and make an energy-efficient, uh, building in perpetuity. And I, I think, uh, we're here today because we think the project meets the current zoning, um, before the planning board, and we'd like to ask for, uh, your consideration and approval. How's that? If there are any questions?
Thank you. Um, does anyone have any questions for the applicant? I do have one question. You mentioned on the septic, that it kind of sounded like they were going to be, the additional distribution box and the leaching field are going to be tied into the existing? Or are they going, is it going to be a whole new?
I can show you, I, I have something here.
That was, as I promised, I was, uh, interested at our last meeting. It's a draft plan, so it's, um, unstamped. But, um, I can show it to you if it's helpful. I can just lift it up and you can kind of s- see it. Can everybody see that plan?
Yeah.
And so, you can see where the existing house is. This is the old leaching field that's here. What, yeah, okay, thank you very much, sorry about that. I don't have a board big enough. Um, that's the AD, that's the accessory dwelling unit that's here. And then, uh, this is where the old leaching field was. And essentially, the collectors now that are designed are not, there's other options for leaching fields, which is that they're not the big concrete structures. They are, uh, uh, shallower and smaller. And so, I believe with this design, we're also able to meet more of the criteria than our original septic. So not only is it an upgrade for use, but my understanding of this system from the engineer is that it also is farther away from the water table. So it's better for the resource as well as better for our own project. And so, that's the, this was the drawing that was in draft plan.
Chair, we just have to remind the applicants, they have to speak in.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, I can do it one more time, I can give a.
So it sounds like it's a new, um.
It's not, it's a modification of the existing. The original distributions and part of the old system will stay. And then the leaching field, um, which is the, uh, each of the, um, collectors, um, and leaching, um, uh, will be added to in terms of the, um, overall. So it'll be for a four-bedroom, um, property with both properties combined. And, uh, I think with both properties combined, it also meets the square foot criteria and some of the other zoning criteria for accessory dwelling units, um, in, in Sandwich community.
Okay. Great. Um, any other, any questions? No. Um, so, s- do we have any comment from engineering or?
No additional comments.
No, okay. Um, and are there any members of the public here to speak on this application tonight? No? Um, so if there are no further comments, um, I would ask for a motion to close the public hearing on?
So moved.
The application for eight and ten Cranberry Trail.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstain? Okay, the public hearing is closed. So, let's see. Um, any comments on the board? Okay.
I actually just had one question for Ralph or Leanne. Once an ADU is approved, um, how, what is the follow-up to it? To, um, ensure that the ADU is actually being rented?
Right, that's the, uh, the, uh, is all enforcement. So he, he follows up on, on the special permit, to ensure that, that the conditions of the special permit are being met.
And at least one of the properties, so it could be the other could be rented for twelve months.
Right.
And they could decide to live in the ADU ultimately.
Right.
And I suppose it's, it's worth asking, but there is, um, obviously an office. Is there any concern about the commercial use there, or is it just a home office, right? For, with a resident?
Through the chair, once, once.
It's closed.
Once it's closed.
That's okay.
But just in speaking in generalities, the, um, uh, it's a home office by rights throughout.
Thank you, that's what I was curious about. Excellent. Okay.
Yes, um, so I will take a motion to approve these.
We have your draft.
Oh, okay.
We want to start with. Just on that, or I put it on the screen too.
Oh, okay.
Oh, that's great.
It's not on my paper to read.
And you for the three members, it's what I announced a week ago, and they just go through each section, and you vote, and the findings and, um, conditions of the permit, and then also the location. So we usually start on page two, under the legal history. Um, the application for a special permit is submitted on May twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-four to the purpose of constructing an accessory dwelling unit under Sandwich Community by law, section fourteen-one thirty. After proper notice was given, the public hearing was opened on June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and closed on August sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. The application was accompanied by a site plan entitled Site Plan of Eighteen Ten Cranberry Trail, East Sandwich, MA, prepared for Paul Hajian, dated May tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. The board reviewed the application, the plan, and all of the materials submitted, right, that was the public hearing, and the board has even gave due considerations of the testimony given at the public hearing. The following members attended the public hearing, Melissa, Nicole, Anne, Eileen, and Keen. And then the planning board finds, number one, this application meets the requirements of Section nine, passage two, General Law Chapter forty-eight. The subject property lies within the R-two zoning district. The subject property consists of four, this family, five hundred and eighteen square feet, with two hundred and eighty-four point nine two feet of frontage on Cranberry Trail. Eight and ten Cranberry Trail are owned by two separate trusts. Five, the applicant proposes a detached whole bedroom, five hundred and seventy-six square feet of accessory dwelling unit. Propose unit would be constructed on the second floor of a new garage. There is at least one off-street parking space for the ADU. There are separate kitchen and bath facilities in the ADU. The homeowner will reside on the property. The combined lot allows up to four bedrooms, according to Title V regulations. A fifth bedroom may be added for the introduction of an IA septic system approved by the Board of Health. And under section thirteen, thirty, regardless. The planning board finds that there are no conditions peculiar to this case, but not generally true for the similar prohibited uses on other sites in the same district. The planning board does not find that nuisance, hazard, or congestion will be created. The planning board does not find that there are substantial parts of the neighborhood. The planning board does not find that there will be a variation from the intent of the bylaw. The planning board finds that stated district, district's objectives will be satisfied. The application meets the requirements established by the bylaw, section thirteen-thirty. And the application substantially conforms to all other criteria established in section fourteen-one thirty for a detached ADU. Does anything you'd like to add, or discuss, or?
Does anybody have anything to add? Um, so now I motion for, to adopt those, okay. Can I, um, ask for a motion?
Yes.
To adopt these findings of the planning board?
Aye, Nicole Willett, move to adopt these as the findings of the planning board. And, um, specific to eight and ten Cranberry Trail, special permit.
I second the motion.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain?
Conditions. At the public hearing, the planning board considered any conditions of approval to the special permit. The planning board noted that the following conditions of approval that we oppose to the special permit approval, and that these conditions are reasonable and that the application and success is in interest shall be bound by these conditions. Pursuant to the requirements established by the bylaw, section thirteen-thirty, the grant of special permit shall expire if no substantial construction or occupancy takes place within three years of special permit approval. If we leave such time apart, pursuit or delay of termination of appeal referred to Massachusetts General Law Chapter forty-eight, section seventeen. Two, the village requires all conditions set forth in this decision shall terminate.
I don't think it was on. Um, shall terminate the grant of the special permit. Number three, the special permit shall not take effect until it is recorded at the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds and a copy of the recorded special permit is provided to the planning board. Number four, only one ADU is allowed on the lot. Number five, the ADU may not be sold or transferred separate and apart from the principal dwelling to which it is accessory. The principal dwelling, the ADU, and the lot on which they are located shall remain in common or single ownership and shall not be severed in ownership. Number six, the principal dwelling or the accessory dwelling unit must be the primary residence of the owner, and the remaining dwelling must be leased for a minimum of twelve consecutive months and a maximum of three consecutive years with no subletting to occur, and is prohibited from any use of rental units on a monthly, weekly, or daily basis, including but not limited to seasonal rental and rental through vacation rental services and websites. Number seven, the ADU shall not be used for boarding and lodging or other commercial use. No occupancy of the ADU is permitted other than that as the primary residence of the owner or by lease for a minimum of twelve consecutive months. Number eight, prior to the issuance of a building permit, eight and ten Cranberry shall be combined, and a registered copy of said plan showing one lot provided to this board.
Any comments on the conditions? All right, I would ask for a motion to adopt these conditions.
I, Nicole Willett, move to adopt these conditions of the planning board for, um, eight and ten, uh, Cranberry Trail.
I second the motion.
Um, do I need to do an individual? Okay, all right, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstain? Okay.
And then it's this, um, the decision, so it's just the final vote?
Okay. Do you want me to read the decision?
Um, no, you can just, you can just take a final vote now as to whether you approve or deny the project.
Um, so I would ask for a motion to approve the special permit in consideration of the findings of the planning board and subject to the conditions as stated herein.
I, Nicole Willett, move to approve the special permit in consideration of the findings of the planning board and subject to the conditions as stated herein.
I second the motion.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, abstain? Okay.
It was very nicely done. Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
It's a really beautiful design.
Thank you.
Okay. New business? Okay, new business? So I, okay, but there is no new business, right? Okay, no, no new business. We're good there. Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay, so there is no new business. Um, so then we would move to board discussion. And, um, Ralph or Leanne, do you have an overview?
Yeah, uh, so this one for, uh, we all find a quicker meeting. I said, uh, that, uh, there was a agricultural restriction on the property. And as such, the owner is, is selling it. And when a restriction such as that is on a property, the right of the town has the right of first refusal. Very similar to, um, members who have been here when they had recreational, uh, restriction on the property that go around Holly Ridge. So, just to, um, speak to the board, the, the town has no intent of, of purchasing that property. We have no need or intent to purchase the property. So we're seeking the, uh, from the planning board to, uh, to, uh, vote to, uh, not, uh, not pursue the purchase of the property.
Okay.
Can I ask, through the chair, can I ask a question?
Oh, yes.
So Ralph, is this, uh, this notice was given under, I believe was called section fourteen of chapter sixty-one A, is that correct?
I believe so.
Okay. So, in that section, in addition to the notice, there's information that has to be provided with the notice? Was that information provided?
Uh, we have, we, um, we, we get forwarded to the package, the purchase and sale, uh, the property, the property information, and, and the location, and all the other subsequent information that goes with it.
Was that in our package? All I saw was the letter.
The letter, yeah.
I didn't see any of the other attachments.
Okay. Uh, we did, uh, we did receive, we did receive it.
Oh, it's, it, we were supposed to have a copy of the purchase and sale, purchase price, all terms and conditions. That was all provided?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Can it be added to the, we don't have to send it to us, but can it be added to the records that's out there?
Uh, since we mentioned it, it will be, it will be.
Okay.
Minutes, it will be provided.
Right. Great, thank you.
Okay, so what specifically are we tasked with on this?
Just, uh, every, can I be, uh, work on both of the board, uh, not to, not to proceed with the purchase of, of the, uh, I want to say, I nev- I'm never quite sure, maybe you could help out, Nicole? Is it, are we exercising our right of first refusal? What are, are we?
Are we declining?
We're declining.
Okay.
We're declining.
Declining to exercise.
Yes.
Okay.
But, I mean, Jen would probably be best for that, since she's a land attorney, and I'm not, but, um, yeah, so it seems like the town is not in any way interested.
So this will be going, actually, this will go to Conservation and the board, so I mean, we're, uh, declining, um, I guess, more than we decline to purchase the property at three oh five R.
Okay, so I would ask.
Can I ask another question before we move? So you're be asking us to vote on accepting the town's decision not to exercise their right of first refusal, is that correct?
Yes.
Can you give us a reason why the town has chosen not to exercise their right? I mean, we have a letter from the owner, but you're asking us to vote on something for which you haven't told us yet, why that position's being taken?
There, there are several reasons. One, uh, the estate price, I believe, was, as listed, was a hundred, is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, does not intend to expend CPA funds, uh, for, for this property, because it does not provide, uh, any, um, any access or, or provide any open, open space requirements that the town, that the town is looking for. Additionally, it's, it's a, it's not configured. It has poor configuration. The land, which wouldn't, if the town wanted to purchase it, say, for housing purposes, it, it wouldn't satisfy that need either.
Thank you for that, I appreciate having that before I vote.
Could I just ask, is this normal procedure for property under sixty-one A?
If, uh, the shorter answer is yes, if, uh, because for, um, when there are restrictions on property, which, um, sort of reduce the taxes someone pays on it, could be the agricultural or recreation, uh, when that property is being sold, the town has, has the right to, um, to buy it, to buy it. So, it is, uh, it is, it is standard slayed out. We had something very similar about two years ago, where, um, a property owner's looking to sell a piece of property that had, that held a recreational, a restriction on it, and then this board and the select had a vote on that as well.
Anything else?
I just think that I'm a little bit reserved to make a decision without seeing the added materials that we weren't given. I don't, I feel a little bit not informed at the moment enough. Um, maybe we could have some more discussion and review those materials?
If you want to bring it up, it's up to, I, I guess it's the determination of the board on how to proceed.
I mean, I think Jeff raised a really good question, was we, just to know, like, from the town, otherwise, why there was not an interest. And all I had reviewed was just a letter from the owner of the property indicating that the, that Sandwich was not, um, that the letter, the land was going to be sold.
So there.
Can I just?
Continue the vote until the next meeting, and you could provide us with the documentation?
It's, it's up to the determination of the board, if that's what you'd want to do.
So can I, uh, along that line, thank you, I, I was just going to ask, in addition to the information that came with the letter, is there something in writing from the town that states why? You, you gave us the reasons. The reason I'm asking is, I don't want to continue it only to come back, and it's still just verbal.
Right.
If there's, if there's information you can provide us, that would be, uh, that would be excellent. And I'm always, you know, I'm always in the position that unless the board's comfortable, we shouldn't force a vote until all the material is in. However, you know, the however, is there more material you can give us?
Um, we can give you written explanation, you know, we could provide that for the next, for the next meeting, as to why the, why the town is requesting to decline the purchase of this property.
Think that would, it'd be helpful, and I think it would be a good part of the process, so that documentation is there, the paper trail is there, and then we can take a vote. So I would lean to vote that we continue this.
So I, so what happens if this board says, oh, for whatever reason, we don't support the decision that we recommend, then what happens?
Jean, I don't know, I would have to look into that, because I know that the three boards have to look at it. The Select Board, and the Conservation Commission, and, and the Planning Board. So if one of the, you know, one of the boards declines, I have to, I have to look at what the next steps may be.
Okay, so it sounds like we're going to continue that to the next meeting, in hopes that we might have a little bit more information, um, with which to make a decision. Um, the next item for board discussion is meeting procedure in the absence of a quorum.
I think this, um, just go back to the June meeting, there was, there was some, uh, questions surrounding it. So, as I had said, I put it forward to town council. Town council, um, had. Uh, so as I had said, I put it forward to town council, uh, town council, um, had looked, um, at, had looked at the actions we had taken, um, on that night. And the things were that there were, there were three elements to the, um, element number one was the open meeting law. Element number two was forty A and element, uh, number three, uh, had, was a, was a question of, of, um, ethics, ethics point. Uh, for the, uh, open meeting law, just to generalize, that the, uh, that the, um, town council viewed that no, no, um, generally speaking, no open meeting law violations occurred. Um, his more concern was, was the, was the, um, could it be contin- uh, could it be considered under forty A that the meeting was opened and that you had taken some action on it? Um, he, he believes this was properly posted, uh, as this board may, most of the board knows that, uh, once an application is submitted, we have so much time to act on it. And continuing an application is a, is, is an action. The, uh, intent that it was not to accept the continuation is not a deliberation, but a ministerial act to, uh, to, uh, to push it forward. So he doesn't believe there was any violations of the, uh, of forty A and I think it just, I think just in general, there didn't appear to be any, uh, ethics violations. So that's in a nutshell. Uh, we have to answer any questions as, as you ask.
I thought it was a very thorough response that was provided to us, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, so we didn't do anything wrong.
Yeah.
Which was a great relief to me personally.
I just have one question. Uh, Ralph, you mentioned the, um, is, that once this is accepted by the, um, town clerk's office, is that correct? I think it's, that's how the clerk starts always.
Yes.
Um, that there's a, there's a time limit on it, which I'm aware of. Can we ask the applicant for an extension? We can. They don't have to give it to us, but we could have asked the applicant for an extension?
Um, I, I believe it's, we have, if we were approaching, getting close to the sixty-five day mark, we could have asked for, uh, we could have asked for an extension.
No, but I'm more, I'm more interested in knowing, so it came in, once, once we were aware, it was short notice, once we were aware that we weren't gonna have a quorum, as, and I'm using my term, as opposed to go into this gray area, um, at that time, would we have had the option to ask the applicant?
Yeah.
And we would not have had to then open the hearing and at the same time continue it?
Board always has, has the right to request of the applicant an extension, a mutual extension of time, whether it's to open the meeting.
Okay, so that was, that was an option as opposed to the way we did proceed. Okay, thank you for that clarification.
I'm curious too, because I think that was the only agenda item. Would an option, um, have been to just not hold the meeting at all?
To, if we did not, yeah, if we did not hold the meeting that, uh, under that, we did it for the, the simple, we did, we did a continuation because if we did not hold the meeting, um, we would have, the applicant would, uh, have to re-advertise.
Okay.
We'd have to re-advertise the meeting.
Okay.
So to, you know, to sort of, um, the purpose was that because it was advertised in case anybody, um, came to the meeting and wanted to just understand that we were not taking any deliberation at that time. But if we accept it for a time certain in the future.
Okay, that makes sense.
Can I ask a follow-on question through the chair? And I, I just wanna play through, Ralph and Leanne are aware, um, you know, that, you know, I went through this as everyone else did and Ralph gave a good description. I asked a few more questions about what we received. I am still uncomfortable with the opinions given, and they are opinions. Uh, he did cite one case which is related, but there are, these are his opinions or her opinion, I think it's his. Question relative to what you just were asking about the meeting, as I understand it, and this was clarification for me, the meeting can convene without a quorum. And I, and, and I've read through everything that was done and I understand that and it makes sense. What cannot happen is deliberations cannot happen. Uh, and is, in, in the, I think it's in the, there's a definition of deliberations, I think it's in the law, but it may just be in some, uh, information adjacent to the law, on what a deliberation is and so forth. So as I understand it, we could have proceeded with the meeting as, as we did. Um, as long as those deliberations happened, we would not have violated anything. Uh, and the claim is there were no deliberations. As it said, the only item that was done that evening, there was a pledge allegiance, and then there was a vote to open a public hearing. Before that vote was taken, the meeting has now convened, uh, it's in accordance with what's been posted, if there are people here, they're aware. Could at that time, the applicant been asked to extend the time and that we would not have had to take that vote without a quorum?
The, the continuation has to be accepted and has to be.
Not for continuation.
Well, that's an extension of, of time.
Well, the meeting, yeah, extension of time, in order to ask an applicant for an extension of time, do you have to open the meeting?
We had, it was a posted meeting. If it was prior to the meeting being posted, we could have.
Well, let's split the two and I apologize for, for splitting hairs, but I'm trying, so there was a meeting and then there was a hearing. I, I think of them differently. I know the meeting was posted and as an agenda item on the meeting was the hearing. There were other agenda items also, which were not addressed that evening. So my question is, did we have to address the public hearing agenda item? We did not address others, so did we have to address that one or could we, knowing that we didn't have a quorum, we can convene the meeting, and I, I've gone through all that and I understand why, because no deliberations happened. Could we though have simply asked the applicant for an extension on time and not opened the public hearing?
Because the meeting, because it was a posted meeting, we had to take some action. And the action was, uh, be, the action could have been what we did for, for all intents and purposes, or no action. But because the meeting was open, and this was not a contentious, uh.
No, it wasn't contentious at all, but.
But we had had, you know, in the past where, on, on short notice, um, you know, we have to alert, uh, people who wanna come to the public hearing that there is a continuation. And that was the, and that was the purpose of it.
I understand, it's, it's.
So the answer is, so, so we needed to, so we needed, we needed a vehicle to accept the continuation. And what we did, you know, that night was the vehicle used to accept the continuation.
Yeah, I know what vehicle was used. I'm not sure that was the only vehicle available to us. That's what I'm unsure about.
But does it, Jen, to your question, if I might just jump in, it, we could have asked the applicant for an extension of time, but that wouldn't have helped our purpose. Because if, if they gave us an extension of time, we weren't up against a deadline of time, it was the re-advertising that we were trying to not have to get them to pay a hundred dollar fee again and re-advertise and push it out even further. So that was more the, the part that we were trying to make sure we didn't have to do. So we weren't necessarily worried about the timeframe.
No, I understand, it's, we were trading one off the other.
Yeah.
We didn't wanna have to re-advertise the hundred dollars and so forth.
Yeah.
And, and, and like I said, I, prior to that, you had many years ago received an opinion from legal that you could do this. Uh, and now it's been refreshed and I understand that. And these are opinions, as we stated. So I was just trying to understand if truly, you know, what were we avoiding, what we were trying to avoid, and it appears what we're trying to avoid is the re-advertising and, and the hundred dollars that went with it. Was the purpose for moving forward.
Right, it satisfied the public notice of.
Exactly.
The hearing to be happening at a later date.
Did another mailing of, of the, uh, another certified mailing, which is costly.
I see.
Anything else on that?
Oh, thank you.
Okay, um, moving on to, um, the board's, um, request for comment on the Village Green, um, application that is before the zoning board. Um, the comprehensive permit that is before the zoning board. I was trying to find the comment that you sent. Um, did everybody have a chance to review? The comments that were put forth? Okay, um. So, any comments on the comments?
Yes, there was one thing that I did hope we could, um, elicit, um, from a future presentation at the zoning board that I think we could also include in our recommendation, which is sort of the absence of our, um, whether or not the project evaluated why the solar could not be in, um, developed in a different way, for example, on roof, roofing or, uh, over parking. And if we could include some kind of language about requesting why that was not provided, um, or whether that was considered in the development of the plan, I think that would be helpful. You were very crafty about your language that was proposed, so I don't wanna destroy the tone in any way.
Well, I guess my thought on it was that, um, it, it, there were a lot of questions about the solar array, uh, from start to finish, so that, to me, is included in that, you know? I, I have a question, um, and, and I, I'm not sure whether it's something that we need to even be thinking about, but there was a lot of ex, there's more land in that site that is not being included in this project. Um, is it appropriate for us to, um, ask the, uh, the developers if they have a long-range plan for the property? Um, because that, to me, could be significant. And I don't know if that's in our purview or not.
Um, if you, you may ask that question, um, so, because, um, in prior durations, uh, they had another phase, um, actually, what was presented to this board, um, about a year and a half ago, two years ago, there were three phases to this project. Um, phase one was a hundred and, well, there are three phases. One of the phases was a hundred and forty-four units of affordable housing. And the second phase was solar and the third phase was, I believe, it was two hundred and forty units of affordable housing. Uh, so, um, you, I think it would be appropriate, um, for the, for it to put in that recommendation to the, to the, uh, to the ZDA because it, it would be a pertinent question. This is not the first band of questions asked. I think somebody may have brought it up at, uh, at the public hearing. Uh, and then they could probably bring it up again at next week's public hearing, so.
I think in the, in the diligence that I was doing, um, on the entity that has put forth the application, their LLC that they formed has the number one behind it, which led me to believe that there would possibly be a number two. Um, but I, I think that is a good thing to ask. Um, I think we're gonna get the answer, you know, it's not related to the permit that's before the zoning board right now, so we're gonna get the answer at the time that we ask the question and that could change in the future. But, um, just that little nuance of there being a number one in the LLC name made me think that there were future.
More to come.
Yes.
Right. And how that further development fits into the comprehensive plan for the town as well as the sort of purposes and goals of any forty B application?
Jeff?
So I'm struggling with what we're asking. Uh, and before I go back to that, I don't like asking questions. If you read through this document, it doesn't ask questions. It provides concerns, observations, and the basis behind them, which I think is excellent. If I'm on a committee, what I wanna get is the, this is helpful, planning board, thank you. For us, just to ask a question, what do you plan to do with the vacant land? Okay, we're gonna get an answer. We're not gonna get an answer. Um, this will be read and the applicant will probably answer it. They did answer it at the last meeting. Um, however, there's no constraint that says they have to do that with it or not. They can give us any answer they want. It's not part of the application. So it's, it's, it's really can't be used against them, um, in any way, in reality, other than it being just a public not liking the answer, it really can't be used for anything. So I'm trying to understand myself, what is it we're trying to express? What is the concern and what's the basis of that concern? So are we concerned that, you know, that they're gonna put in more, uh, you know, forty B type housing there? And if we are, what are we concerned about? Just asking them what they plan to do with the other land they have? They own it. Uh, within the rules and regulations and laws, they, they, they can do what they, you know, what, what they want with it. Um, and they're really not obligated, um, in any way that I can see from the plan to tell us what they're gonna do with the adjacent land around it. I mean, you, the office can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think they have to, uh, nor can we hold them to anything they do. So, um, like I say, I'm, I'm hesitant to put questions in. I, I like putting in an observation or a concern and the basis of why that's bothering us. So I'm okay putting this in, but can we craft it as a statement, you know, they own this additional land? It may lead to, or, you know, we link it to, gee, the building is huge, solar array, it's gonna create a massive amount of power, far exceeding what's needed over there. Do they have some, you know, is that vacant land? Are they putting it in for purposes of, of, uh, supporting additional housing? I mean, see, the nature of a question like that relates the two together. That's all I'm trying to ask for. We can come up with some wording to help the office put this together. I think we could do that. And we can always, I apologize, the other thing is, you know, we can always go with this and follow up at a later date with another letter based upon more, you know, uh, I know personally I'm planning to be at the meeting next week. It's insightful to hear what they have to say and we will be, uh, things as we go forward. So we're not limited to just one letter. So if we think something's missing and it's important to get it in here, I'll support putting it in there. If we say, gee, we can wait, 'cause like I said, the last meeting, they did respond, they did answer that question, as Ralph said, someone asked, I can't remember. Uh, they did give an answer. But they gave last answers, changing. That's my thoughts. Thank you.
Anyone else?
What is the amount of, um, excess unused land there? I think it was like twenty acres.
I think it was about, it was about twenty acres. Yeah, I think there's a total of forty-five acres and they're using about thirty-ish. So fifteen to twenty.
So there is excess there that they could utilize it in the future?
Mm-hmm.
Well, in the interest of making it a statement, could we just a- ask for clarification of the long-range plan for the entire property? Or the entire trust or whatever? And what does one mean and maybe there's two? I mean, is there a way to kind of just craft it as what is your long-range goals for?
And we can craft it as a, as a statement instead of a question if, um, if that's what the board desires, yeah.
I guess it's, to my mind, it's still a question. What's your long-range plan? That's a question or, you know? And it comes back to, I'm okay putting a question, but what's our concern based on, on our role and responsibility? And we're trying to help the board bring these things forward so that the, we can, you know, informed decision can be made on this comprehensive plan for the town. What is, what is our concern that there's undeveloped land? I, I.
Well, I guess one concern I might have would be if we're going to be making, um, recommendations about traffic flow and things like that and in, in anticipation that it's going to be a much larger project, it could impact what traffic considerations there are.
Again, going back, the only, is the traffic set to gonna be done? That was discussed at the last meeting.
Right.
It will be done based on this comprehensive plan. And this comprehensive plan is defined. Now, you can answer the question, the office can answer the question, I mean, I, I, if they add, if they were to add more buildings and so forth, I mean, I don't know if they, they have to put in an addendum, they have to put in a new plan. I, I mean, I got no indications last meeting, they plan to do anything more in this comprehensive plan. It's, it's defined. They've got the, they've got the, uh, housing, they have this large solar, and then they've got this agricultural business that was very unclear. They started with an agricultural building, but it's, so there are three things they talked about, uh, that further clarification is needed on. I don't know them adding anything. I don't know them adding anything. Any study, and there will be a study done relative to traffic, it will be related to this plan. So even if they plan to develop in the future, it can't be taken into consideration for this plan. I shouldn't, it can't be, I should restate that. It doesn't have to be. They're only required, in the traffic study that will be done, to look at what this project will do. The town, the boards can ask them to expand it. We've done that on occasion, but it's really up to the applicant to agree to do it or not. So I, again, I,
I hear what you're saying, and I don't want to interrupt. Are you finished, or?
I'm thinking, I think I am.
Okay. So I agree with that. I don't think we could bound them in any way to what they're then going to do in the future, but I do wonder about with the 40B permit application and the, the concerns of the ZBA, right? In looking at the bigger picture here, where we've all sort of, we've all sort of shared that we're concerned that there is a solar farm being disguised as housing to fit into the 40B. So what happens if the 40B is approved to the, and given a permit for the property, the housing is established, and let's just say hypothetically, a solar, the solar was approved, right? As part of that, or some negotiated size of a solar farm is, is approved. Then what happens if they are going to put another solar farm or on additional, you know, property that they have? Is that going to then trigger something under 40B? Or is that going to trigger a special permit of some sort that we would be reviewing?
The current 40B, the current comprehensive permit defines that solar field. If they put an additional solar field, they would have to do it either A, on the, on the other property outside of the 40B process, or B, if they do another housing, another housing project, and they define additional solar as ancillary to the housing project. So. So they can't sort of piggyback onto the, they cannot piggyback onto the current, onto the current permit, the comprehensive permit.
And that's because the 40B comprehensive permit has to have actual housing, correct? Has to be considered under that segment of the law?
Right, the, usually, comprehensive permits are pretty well-defined. They, they put in the findings and the conditions because of, because of the nature of a comprehensive permit and the waivers that are allowed. They try to be as specific as possible.
Could it be made a condition that they can take no further action with the property?
Well, any action taken? You can amend the, should I, a quick answer with the 40B? If you're going through the process and you amend it, the, it goes before the ZBA. And the ZBA has to determine whether it's a minor modification or a major modification. If it's a minor modification, the ZBA could just vote on it, and then, and they could, and the developer could move forward. If it's a major modification, they have to go through a public hearing process again. Forty, the 40B law defines what a, what a major, what a major modification would be.
So there's no way to negotiate a condition to approve the, the primary plan now? And make the condition that they can do nothing further with the property then?
It, it depends, and I hate to say that to you, Eileen, sometimes you don't want to, if it's a condition that makes the project, and the terminology is uneconomic, then the housing, housing court can strike, can strike that condition. So. So as we go through the, as we go through the conditions, as we move, as we move through the process, we have, again, we have both, we have secured a, a 40B expert consultant, and our, and our town council is, is very good. So when, when we're going through that process, hopefully the conditions are ones that will, that benefit everyone.
I think where I'm unclear is when I first heard about this, this is my second meeting, where this board's asked to comment. That's it, they're not, those comments don't have to be satisfied. The zoning board doesn't owe us a response to those comments. We're not in a position to make any conditions that's outside of this board's role in this particular process.
I, I think, I, I think each board in town is very respectful of the other boards, and I think especially in situations when it comes to a comprehensive permit, because the comprehensive permit, these things would come before you. Case in point, the solar. If it were, if it were not under a comprehensive permit, it would come to the planning board. So, for, for review and approval. So the board, the Board of Appeals, you know, takes these comments very seriously. And, you know, as, as this board, if, when it does receive, when it receives, you know, comments from staff comment and, and other board comments, when you do, you do, you do look at it, and you, you condition, condition accordingly. You know, case in point, where Health had an issue with eight-ten cranberry. So it was, it was brought up, and, you know, it was brought up by this board, and it had to meet the satisfaction of the board.
Anything else?
So I guess, sorry, I'm just, I mean, I, I want to acknowledge that even though the conditions that ultimately are negotiated or discussed or put into place by the ZBA cannot be uneconomical, they also have to be conditions, right, that meet the local needs of the community. So is, I just wanted to try and take another look about maybe including language that would emphasize that.
If, if I may recommend to the board that I think it would be appropriate to send, again, send this in, and then, and maybe we could add the caveat to it that, you know, reserve the right for future comments, because, you know, if we, we take it back and tweak it, we won't have it in time for the August thirteenth, August thirteenth meeting, and, yeah, yeah, and I think this, I mean, you had a very good discussion on it last time, and I think Leon did an excellent job in pulling your thoughts together, so I think it would be important for the board to, you know, to see that, and at, and instead of some, I don't know when the next future meeting would be, maybe on the twenty-seventh, or maybe sometime in the future. But I think it would be, I think it's really good for the board to, to see, to see your thoughts on it.
Yeah, I agree. That was very thoughtfully written.
It was, yeah.
I think it conveyed everything that we've been kind of batting around. And I think we're going to continue to have questions, comments, and so maybe just adding a little sentence to say that we're still, we're still reviewing as, as they are. We're all kind of still looking at this and to expect comments in the future when we get more information. Anything else? Nope. Okay. So the next item on the board discussion is Cool Corridors Grant Program Planting Plan Approval. And for that, we have our tree warden, James Sacco.
If, that, that's good. I guess we need some, so a consensus that, to, to move those comments forward. So it doesn't have to be a vote, so everybody's.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And I'm just going to move the microphone around a little bit.
So I want to present to you tonight and ask for your approval of our planting projects through the Cool Corridors Tree Planting Grants. I have some maps here of what we're proposing to do, if you want to pass those. There's four of them to share. But the first page is the, what was planting priority. We're planning to plant, if approved, sixty trees in the town neck area. And as you can see on the second page of that, and when we get around, there's three hot zones in there. So Cool Corridors, what they're looking to do is minimize the effects of of extreme heat and enhance overall tree canopy cover in, in areas in neighborhoods or public places. And so they want to prioritize spots that are either high-traffic areas or in the, in the hot zones there. So on the map there, I prioritize the planting plan to do mostly in the, the area. I've highlighted in green on the map as the number-one priority, and then in the middle there is the second priority, and last in the upper part of town neck there. In addition to that, I'd, we'd pay more attention to the highest traffic pass, which would probably be closest to the beach areas there, where it kind of bottleneck's coming down to the parking lot on Town Neck Beach. So in order to do this, there isn't a lot of layout land in, in the neighborhoods there. So we'd be going door-to-door asking for permission to plant on private property. If approved, we would give them a list of trees to choose from, take their considerations with that, and suggest locations, and look for their approval on that as well. In addition to that, we have to maintain the trees for two years after planting, which is mostly a watering plan, but I've also included in the budget for a fertilization application each year, as well as guying and staking each tree to just help them stay upright in their first couple of growing seasons. Yeah, that's all.
Could you give just a little blurb about this, the Cool Corridors Grant?
Sure.
And who initiated that, and?
Yeah. So it's through the, it says the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, and I believe also the, the DCR and the the state forestry and urban forestry departments there. So they're giving financial assistance, this is right off what the proposals are sought for, financial assistance to municipalities, nonprofit 501(c) organizations, state housing authorities, and/or private and public schools and universities to construct tree planting and related activities to assist with mitigating extreme heat and to enhance the tree canopy within neighborhoods and public spaces. So we're municipalities, so we fall under that qualification for the grant.
Okay. And, and then, did they determine the hotspots, or was that?
So the hotspots are from their, their maps. And then I chose the area to, within the town that had the hotspots in them to do the planting. The other thing that they would look for, which I don't think we have, is a, I looked on that, I think there was a map for this as well, and I looked, I don't think we have any of these areas are low-income areas that are that have a lot of gray spaces in them and stuff like that, that would also improve the, like, urban heat islands and stuff like that in there. And help aid in combating that.
And the grant includes the trees themselves, the planting, and the support for those first two years?
Yes, sorry, I should include that. We're asking for fifty thousand dollars from the state to do the planting. And I have my budget breakdown here of that. Somewhere in here. But that does include trees, planting, any supplies we'll need for that. Budgets in some for replacement trees if some fail as well. And maintaining our equipment while we're doing that.
For how long?
Two, two, two years into the tree's life. And then after that, if it's on private property, it'll be the responsibility of the homeowner, unless there is, as it grows, has limbs growing over the road, which will then be the town's responsibility, just as any tree in the town.
You might not know the answer to this, but since we are going to be going on private property and doing that, it seems like there might be a little bit of liability there. Is there going to be some documentation between the homeowner and the town?
I don't think we'll be liable after the two years. The, the reason we can do that is because of a law in the, the Mass General Law is Chapter eighty-seven, Section seven, says we can to plant public shade trees if there isn't a lot of space. We can plant up to twenty feet from, on an abutters property, so off the layout of the road, or town property, twenty feet onto the abutters land if they approve so, with written approval. So in that written approval, we could include some sort of liability clause, saying that, after the two years, you do accept this as your tree, and it's, if it reaches a certain size and fails and damages your property, it's just like any other tree in your yard. But as well with that, if it were to, if it were on town property, which where we, we can be liable in certain instances, this is not pertaining to this, but we have to identify a defect in the tree and know it's there for, to, to be liable for that tree failing, which doesn't happen very often.
Possible for the utility clearance for the digging and planting?
So we have to contact DigStave to, to do all the digging, obviously, and,
So we, that's, so the town, the town's responsible?
Mm-hmm. Yep. We would do the digging, yes. The only thing that I've budgeted to contract out in this is fertilizer applications. Everything else, the town will do.
Was there?
Sorry, oh, go ahead.
Sorry.
No, go ahead.
Was there any outreach to the residents in this area to see if they even wanted this?
So I haven't reached out to any of the residents. I'm assuming in all the area of Town Neck, I'd be able to get sixty people who would want to have a tree on their property. I didn't want to reach out before I sent in the application, just in case it got denied, and promised a bunch of people a tree that I could not then give them afterwards. But after I gain approval, then I will go out and actually delineate every single exact spot where every tree will go in there. I submitted this in my plan to the state for now.
I assume it will probably meet some resistance, because some people are paying a premium for a property there to have an ocean view, and they're certainly not going to want a forty-foot tree in their front yard.
Well, they, if they didn't want it in their yard, they wouldn't have to accept.
It's a hundred percent voluntary?
Yes. Yeah.
I have a, just a few questions. I'm trying to understand, first, let's start with the hotspots map.
Yes.
So who generated this hotspots map?
That was generated by the state, so they, the Department of Executive Energy and Environmental Affairs.
So do they identify hotspots throughout all of Sandwich? Or did you ask them just to do this area?
No, they, they identify them in the whole state.
The whole state? So there are additional areas in Sandwich that are hotspots?
There are some additional areas. A lot of the additional areas were part of the military base, because there's a lot of area cleared there, and a lot of, they have a lot of hardscapes in that area, so asphalt and such in there.
Yeah, I'm focused on Sandwich.
Yeah, Sandwich, yeah.
And the reason, it appears you're going to be able to buy, with this amount of money, you're going to be able to get sixty trees. Is that correct?
Sixty trees and care for them, yeah.
So you can get sixty trees, and, and this, these hotspots? So you can get sixty trees, and and this, these hotspots, it's pretty localized. You know, you could probably address these hotspots with maybe six trees, I'm just guessing, or maybe ten. And there are other hotspots in the town of Sandwich that are not getting addressed. And I'm wondering why are we putting all sixty trees in this area and going well outside where the hotspots are? And why are you on, and it may be good reason, that's why I'm asking it, is why not address the hotspots as is shown here, which is not going to take all sixty trees, and then go address some of the other hotspots? Why, why are we, why did you choose to put all your resources in just one spot?
Well, part of the reason, which is a simpler reason, is just because localizing all the plantings to one area can have a bigger impact at once, and it's easier to manage and implement in one spot there. The other reason is, in Town Neck, there, there isn't a lot of canopy cover there. There's a lot of smaller trees, but there's also a lot of lots that are tight and closely packed together, so there isn't a lot of trees in that area as opposed to other parts of town, like Forestale, of course. And in planting more trees there, we hope to increase the overall canopy as well as combat the hotspots in that area.
Yeah, my, my point is, you haven't given us much information, and and not that we asked beforehand, because this is a first-person hearing of this, but I would like to see all the hotspots across, to make an educated decision, what I need to understand is, what's the full analysis done by the state of the entire town?
Yeah.
So we can participate with you, since you're asking for our approval of this planting, we could participate with you in working through that logic.
Okay.
We may come up with the same answer. Or we may come up with something different, or we may, you know, combine the two together. I'm just concerned about, because, you know, if I had thousands of trees, it'd be different. But I've got sixty trees, you know, and how I'm going to maximize the use of those sixty trees. And I understand what you're saying about, gee, if I do sixty in one area, it's localized, and I've got trucks and equipment and folks and so forth, but it's unlikely you're going to do it all at one time. Also, you could do sixty trees in this area, you could get a fair number of people down in one area that don't want them, so, you know, overall of Town Neck, as you showed, going into the yellow and going into the red, you, you may have sixty trees spread all over the place, so it's not clear how much of a benefit you're going to get back for just doing sixty in one place. And I, and I want to be able to answer, also answer the question, you know, when a resident comes to me and say, well, why do we address Town Neck and not X, Y, Z? If I had all the maps and we had the discussion, and we could clearly give them a concise answer as to why this was the focus. And I'm not saying this shouldn't be, but I don't have enough information yet to know that it is, and how I should vote on this.
When I looked at the map, and the overall map, and you guys could look at it too, it's on the, it's on the state website, if you go to this page, you can find the maps These were the three most localized spots that I found, and in addition to that, like I said before, there's less canopy cover and more tightly-packed lots in this area for, that have just been probably cleared over time as people have moved in and out of these properties. So in addition to that, the other thing is, this is the first time we've applied for this particular grant to do tree planting, and I'm sure they do this yearly. I think this is the first year they've done this particular grant, but they're planning on continuing to do this. So we could also address other areas over time. But it would be challenging to address them all at once, and I don't know that if we asked for more money to do more plantings in different parts of town like that, that we could, that we could maintain all those trees at the same time. If we have them localized in one area, it is a big task, but we are going to be able to plant all sixty trees, if approved, in the, in next spring and maintain them for the two years.
I understand, and, you know, I would, I, I need more information, and if I can go find it, someone can just tell me where to go find it, and I'll find it, and I can look at it. Maybe thirty in one place and thirty another makes sense, or forty and twenty, I don't know until I see the maps and we talk more about it. The second question I had, and I had multiple questions here, but it's the second area I'm concerned about, and it goes back to something Eileen said, and something you just said. The reason there's no canopy cover there, it's all been chopped down. So if you agree, if you come to me and I volunteer and say, yeah, you can put a tree in front of my house, what prevents me from cutting it down in three years?
Nothing.
Yeah.
You can do, you can do that.
So I'm a little concerned about, all our eggs in one basket, it is an area, as said, and it, there are folks that, one, they may not want it on their property, they're not going to want it on their neighbor's property either, because it's going to block their view. And I'm just concerned about the investment we're going to make and assuring that we're going to get the most bang for the buck. Because there may be some hot zones within the town that could be addressed, which are not coastal views, and less likely that, geez, it's going to get cut down in the long And the last question I have, the third question was, and I don't know the name of them, there's a group in town, Ralph, if you could help us here, or help me here. Whenever we have a public hearing for scenic roads and trees, there's a group that comes and always speaks to us about the importance of these beautiful big trees with the canopies and so forth. I forgot the name of that group, it's a volunteer group. And I was going to ask you, have you, oh, have you worked with them? Have you sat down with them and gone over the options and looked at heat maps and possibilities? Because they're great, they're a great group to work with.
We haven't
I apologize, I didn't realize you were here, because you're a gentleman.
We haven't spoken a lot on this project, they are aware that I applied for this grant. But we haven't spoke on this project, we were looking at obtaining a grant to plant in the, in the village area, mostly on Main Street, which I think there was a small hotspot in that area, but I also knew, because we were planning to plant within the village area, I didn't want to focus this planting over there as well.
So that's, so that's also, and you let it in there, so you have plans for other opportunities with treason, and I think it would be beneficial for us if you told us, and not that you held it from us, since you didn't think of doing it, is, what's your total plan? Because now, like I said, I'm just looking to make sure I can understand when I'm asked a question by anyone, why here, why now, why this? We could also point to, well, there is actually a plan to do here and a plan to do there, and we're going to get funds from here, and you have your regular funds, and then you get funds from here, and now we've got a total picture of what's going on, and we can vote to approve a piece of it with other pieces coming later. And I truly appreciate all the work you've done, and I truly appreciate the fact you're going after this and treason report, and the value they give the community, and we heard about it a lot in a lot of studies we've done, about the character of the town and the trees, and how it fits in, and livable organizations, and villages, and neighborhoods, and all these good things. And I really want to support this, I just don't have enough information right now to make the decision.
Is there an application due date to be aware of, to date on spring planting?
Well, I have, the, the application is in, and it was the, it was on the second of August, I believe, was the application due date. And then they, in the, in this, it's just, I think it says that the, any planting needs to be completed, I'm not sure if it's before the end of the two years for this grant, or if it's just before the end of 2025, they want the planting completed. But that is somewhere in the application.
Does the application that is already submitted tie you to the locations on these maps?
No, it doesn't necessarily tie me to that, but they, it would be more difficult, and I might have to resubmit, and, and I'd have to gain approval to do that through, from the state, yes.
Well, my other thought too was like, what if, let's say you have leftover of the sixty, are you able to plant those sixty freely in other hotspots, which we've kind of been able to pull up thanks to Leanne?
You have to really zoom in on that map.
Really do have to zoom in.
To, for them to appear, because
All these blues. So I mean, let's say that, you know, you have identified these three hotspots near Town Neck, but people don't want to plant trees in their yard because they're near the beach and various reasons. But I don't know, but let's say you don't use all sixty, you know, is it going to be easy to then sort of look at and transfer and allow the planting of those trees in other locations? I'd really like to know that, you know?
Yeah, I believe that would be easy to do. That, that wouldn't be a problem.
Especially there's like a hotspot, you know, I'm seeing six A that's identified at, six A at Jarvis. But then, you know, don't want to leave out Forestale either.
Yeah.
So if I, if I'm understanding this, if you could just pull it down a little, Leanne, I'm trying to understand, no, the other way, I'm sorry, I want to see Town Neck in the picture. So what we're looking at is the dark blue are the hot zones?
Yeah.
And if I'm looking at Town Neck, which is, is this right up further, right? It's that little one on the other side of the road up there? The little one, compared to all these other big ones?
They're small. Some of those big ones, you got to consider, so if you look down
I apologize, I just, I'm just trying to understand, because we said earlier that, I don't know the exact words, but it was like, this is the most needed area, and the others, but I see, you know, I see stuff off six A there that's sort of towards the town village and up by Tupper Road, I mean, Tupper Road, it's interesting.
So the
And again, it goes back to my comment, the likely, the investment we're going to make and the likelihood that they'll be maintained and not cut down in the future is important to me, in a sense, and it's got to be considered, it's got to be one of the criteria.
So I did consider, that's why I'm going, and even if I were to plant on, on public land in front of somebody's home, which could be possible if there is a layout available, large enough to plant a tree there, I would still want to gain approval of that homeowner, so they're, they're in favor of a tree being planted in front of their home.
Well, I know, but we all change our mind down the road, and the property sells. So unless you can write it in as a condition that the tree can't be taken down unless it becomes a hazard, or it becomes injured beyond, you know, you being able to be nurtured back to health and so forth. We're humans.
Right.
That's correct.
That's equally true.
But not, not on public land, and less likely, because you're going to ask yourself, why are they cutting it down? A large majority of the clearing, after the homes and developments and the solar fields are going in and so forth, and cut all those trees down, a large reason, and we, and we had one come up for scenic roads years ago, was condominiums up on a hill, cleared a huge amount of area because they wanted to see the ocean, it's to see the ocean. So I do think that has to be taken into consideration as to risk. I'm not saying don't put any there, I'm just saying, I don't know if I'd put all my eggs in one basket, that's all.
Well, to, to really combat this, you do have to put a lot of trees in one area. The other thing is, I could, I do have to look into that more, and I could find out for you exactly what we can do, because these are considered public shade trees that we're putting back on people's properties. But it's kind of a gray area as to where, as far as I know, where we can dictate what somebody could do to a tree that we agreed to put on their property and only agreed to maintain for two years. Because Sandwich doesn't have any sort of bylaw, like some other towns do, where you need approval to remove any tree on your property, never mind one's just abutting the road. So that's something we have to, we'd have to look into and see if there's anything we could implement to protect the trees that we do plant. However, with planting a, a large amount of them, gaining the favor of everybody that wants one, I'd be confident that we're still gaining a significant benefit over time, even if some do get removed, if houses get sold and new owners don't like them, or people change their minds.
Well, and also, like, let's just look at the original thing, which is there's money in the state budget that you're applying for that will benefit Sandwich.
Right.
Even if it's short-term.
Yes.
By addressing the hotspots. And that money is going to go to other towns and municipalities or other qualifying, right? Or whatever was outlined as a criteria. And so if we aren't applying for that and considering maybe offering that to our residents, then I think we're missing some, we're missing out.
Right. Yeah, this is
For people that do want a tree.
I don't support simply applying for money from the state, first of all, it's our money, because it's cut there from taxes.
Absolutely.
I want to see the money used wisely, and I want to see it as investment for long term, I don't support short-term. So I'm not saying this is the wrong thing, I'm just saying I don't have enough information to vote, to support your planning, your, your planting plan, that's, that's all I'm saying. And, and I've shared with you where my concern's at, and I've shared with you what additional information I'd like to see. If we do take a vote tonight, it'll be, it's just a decision of the board to approve and not approve.
Yeah.
You could bring up one of the points also. This Town Neck is an extremely tight neighborhood, and there are very many cross streets, and I know I travel it frequently, and I think that these trees may create a hazard, a vision hazard, being able to see oncoming traffic and that type of thing. I, I know there's a particular corner I'm thinking of, where there is a rather large tree or bush that is there, and it's very difficult to see cars coming up from the left. And so I think that it could become a hazard if there are enough of them, or if they're in the, in the right location, that, especially like on a, on a corner property, at cross streets.
Right.
Did you think about that with the location consideration?
Another thing that
That's, that's also all included in the grant application, so it says, with all of this, considering species and tree size and location for each individual spot is part of the project planting plan. So we're not going to plant any trees that are going to grow larger than thirty feet under wires, we're not going to, we're not going to plant any trees that are going to block street signs or impede views of traffic. And that might be something that, you know, we work on with homeowners and say, hey, you know, we could plant this here on layout, but it's going to be in a tough spot with the wires, so we have to move this back, and this might impede the view of traffic or pedestrians, so we're going to move this back farther in this location, that might be a safer and better location for the tree to grow and thrive. And this, or, or this species may do better here for these reasons for public safety, essentially. So that's all been thought of and included in the state's approval of the project.
Do you know timing of when we would hear if we were
Um, I believe, let me see if I can find it in here, I believe it said October, but I am not exactly sure.
So to kind of recap, you applied for the grant, and we're waiting to hear back from the state. I think there's some things that you need to provide to them, one of which would be
Your approval.
When we have a vote on it, the minutes from that meeting, which it looks like it's only, in our purview, is only plantings on municipal land. Didn't look like it was, in the application, it didn't look like it was plantings on private property either. If we were not to vote on this tonight, would that delay anything for you? If we needed to get a little bit more information from you?
I don't believe so. I think they'd still consider our grant, it's just if you guys needed more information, and we needed to have a, another meeting about this, and you guys decided at the next meeting that you didn't want to approve it, then at that point, they would, you know, they couldn't give us the, the money for the grant to do the planting.
Okay.
And then we would have to, at that point, we couldn't reapply until next year.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so a delay in our vote then does sound like it would delay receiving?
If, I don't believe they'd give us any time past the, the date that they want to, you know, announce the recipients of the grants. They're already considering, because they've accepted our application, but they are contingent on the approval they've accepted our application, but they are contingent on the approval of the planting board. So if they want to approve it, but, but the planning board did not approve it, then we could not accept the money from the state to do the planting.
So going then back to, if they, if this board were to approve it, and they approved it, there is some flexibility as a second step of where the trees actually go, or you're committed to that, so.
Yes, there are some, there is some flexibility, and I may need to submit some more drafts if we didn't approve one area and we wanted to do a different one, or something like that. But as far as if we get through, if I went door to door through every house in Town Neck, and we did not get 60 people who wanted a tree in their yard, or wanted a tree in front of their property, one I could use, utilize more of Town Neck going down the strip towards the, towards the beach and the properties, and you pull in actually on Town Neck Road. But if we actually needed to move and do some other areas in town, I don't believe that would be a problem at all. I did want to address one more thing, you, question you had, Jeff, as to the different areas where there's larger spots that show up in the town there in blue. Some of those that I looked at are just gray areas that I can't amend with trees, so there's the, the industrial park is one of those blue areas.
Sand and gravel pit, I noticed is another.
Yeah, sand and gravel pit.
Stop and shop.
Stop and shop.
High school, all the ball fields at the high school.
Yeah, so those, those are areas that we probably couldn't plant in and amend those areas with trees.
Right, okay. So, I wonder, in the interest of time, if we, the board, might do a straw poll, just to see where we all each stand on this, to see if it does warrant further discussion and maybe getting more information, or if you might feel comfortable, you know, approving the, the grant, and then kind of evaluating the planting plan at a later time. Jean, do you want to?
I'm comfortable approving.
Okay. Eileen?
I'd prefer more information on it, and, you know, how much flexibility there would be in, you know, some of the trees not going in Town Neck.
Jeff?
I'd prefer more information, before I can make a decision.
LeAnn?
I'm comfortable moving ahead.
Okay.
I am too, I'm comfortable, I like that you are willing to.
There's flexibility.
Present flexibility to the state based on our recommendations.
Okay. I'm also comfortable moving ahead too, so I don't know what that does for, do we need to have five?
No, this is a majority vote.
Oh, it is, okay.
It's not a special permit.
Okay. So, would you like us to, after sort of listening to the straw poll, would you like for us to vote on it tonight?
Um, I guess I, it's not a majority vote, as you said, right, Ralph?
I'm sorry, was it?
It's a unanimous vote on a majority vote that we're looking for here, or is it a majority vote?
It, it can be a majority vote, it doesn't need to be unanimous vote, but I'm sure, depending on the grant, you know, do they want to see a unanimous vote? So I guess that's my question to you.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Um, I don't, I'm curious, do you, would you call it approval if it's a uni, if it's a majority?
It would still be, it would, a majority vote would, would still be, would be an approval.
Information that wasn't, if I can just provide this.
Yeah, absolutely.
Based on the brochure from CoolCorridorsMass.gov. It does indicate that the deadline was August 2nd, August and September, the EEA is going to conduct application review, October and November, awards are going to be announced, and contracting will commence after award announcement, and then, so, if there are people here in a unanimous vote would assist in providing that information to obtain the grant, you may find it makes sense to get us some feedback for the next meeting, so that we can quickly make a decision, and you might have a unanimous vote from this board, which might further be beneficial for your grant proposal, and would alleviate some of the concerns of members on the board.
Okay.
But that's a decision that you.
Is there a question about that, or if we know the answer? Does more than the board approval have to be provided to the grant? Do they need to know the details of deliberation or the vote, or do they just need to know the board approval?
They've asked for the meeting minutes and the documentation reflecting the planting plan approval. But, but again, that, it specifically states that's only the trees that are planted on municipal land.
It, it does state in there as well, that you can plant on private property.
Yeah, right.
Just want to.
Right, under that section of law.
Yeah, yeah.
With voluntary acceptance.
Yeah.
And you're saying this is not a plant, to plant on municipal land, so that second part is?
I just wonder if that's even in our, if we're sort of arguing something that's not even in our purview, because if we don't have, if the town can plant, can go to, you know, 13 Alme Ave and say, hey, we'd like to give you a tree for your front yard, would you like it? And the homeowner says, yes, we would love that, I wonder if that is even in our purview, or if our purview is planting on municipal lands only. Right. Ralph?
Um, I think it falls under the, well, it falls under the planning board, because the planning board has, in, 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 in joint with the, with the tree warden, some authority over trees. So, you know, it's, it's kind of the way we look at it with scenic roads, although they're, they're all on, on, on town land, so I think, you know, I think it, it helps the grant if, if the planning board, you know, approves the, approves the planting plan the tree warden has presented, so I think that's what, that's what the Commonwealth is looking for. I think it's more of a, a sort of, you know, a show of confidence in the tree warden that, that, that he is following the Cool Corridors grant, grant layout, and that we're making steps to, to really green Sandwich with trees, so.
I think what I would like to see is maybe like a slight addendum that also accounts for the possibility of the other hotspots, especially if there are remaining 60 trees, or also just an analysis of why this specific area might be the priority in the green zone, but then also looking at other priority hotspots, or why they've been excluded because they are like, you know, areas that just can't have trees.
Okay, I did include that in my, I don't know if they've seen it, LeAnn, but I think I did send you my full proposal, and I did include some of that information in there. Mainly just focused on why I chose that area, not, I wasn't specific as to why I didn't choose other areas in town.
Right, yeah.
Okay, so it sounds like we're going to regroup with a little bit more information.
Sure.
At the, at our next meeting. So specifically, I think it would be helpful, and again, thank you for your hard work and going after, you know, available funds to make our town prettier, and certainly we all love trees, and I think it would be beneficial if we could see, I was sort of poking around on the map as you were talking.
Yeah.
And I poked on 10 different sites, and I could see why you didn't choose them, because, you know, the sand and gravel pit, we can't, you know, we basically can't plant trees in there.
Yeah.
Or the skate park, or, you know, wherever, so, but maybe just sort of, if you documented your thought process.
Sure.
And then even some documentation on what your plans are, if there is a round two of this, where those, you know, what your next step might be, or if you have any of the 60 trees left over, you know, what your thoughts are of where they might go, I think that might be helpful for us.
Absolutely.
But again, thank you very much.
Yeah, no problem.
Through the chair, can I just make one other request? And I, I apologize, the woman in the back, I, I didn't get, I didn't ask you your name, nevermind, I didn't catch it, but the group that you're with is called?
Sandwich Tree Advisory Committee.
Advisory Committee, yes. The request I have through the chair is that you share with them what you're planning, I'd like to see them at the next meeting say yea verily, we've been able to look at it, and, and we support the plan to go forward. You know, they're more of an expert than I am, and historically, as long as I've been on this board, they come whenever we have tree things, and they speak, you know, wisely and informatively about, you know, what they've seen, what's happened over the years, and why this is important, so I just, I would ask that if I can, if you have, have a problem with it, I'm sure they don't have a problem with it, it's just, you know, go over with them, and, and I'd like to hear from, you know, it can just be a memo, gets read into the record or whatever, but usually someone shows up and speaks to it, is usually what happens. Thank you.
And certainly if there's recommendation, you know, and support there, that may be beneficial to your proposal.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, so, is that, does everybody, anybody have anything else to add to that? No? Other matters not reasonably anticipated?
I have one, someone else asked. Um, so for, I'm going to ask, for the next meeting, an agenda item to be added, and I'll give you the background on that agenda item. So, I, I, I want to add an agenda item that we'll discuss, so it'll be under the board discussion, and I'll hand something out tonight that you can look at, so it'll allow you to understand a little bit about it, and then we can be more informed to talk about it. Back in March, it's been a while now, in the Sandwich Enterprise, there was an article written, and the individual, it had many things in it, but the individual who wrote it was Candy Thomas, some of you may know her, sorry, yeah, Thompson, I think it's how it's called, Candy Thompson. And at the time she wrote it, I went in and spoke with LeAnn and Ralph, you know, just hash around a little bit about it, this had to do, would have had to do with, she wrote an opinion about the boards and the opportunity for the public to come and speak at the board. And some boards in the town have what they call an open session, where you, beforehand, you can ask to be on it, and you can come and you can speak. The one I'm most familiar with is how they do it at the select board. And her comment was, you know, gee, how come all boards don't have this? Would seem, you know, to her, would seem appropriate that all boards in town should give residents the opportunity to come and speak, not just on the gender items, which are allowed to come in, but just to speak as they currently do at the select board. And at the time, she indicated that there were 12 boards that didn't allow it, I think later she corrected that to say there were 11, and she had counted incorrectly. And when I went in and spoke with LeAnn and Ralph about it, they had wisely suggested to me, they said, you know, it's March, it was probably, it was late March, in fact, it was probably April when I went and talked to you, because the date of this is March 22nd, and they said, you know, we're going to be sitting a new board, we currently have one board member who's not going to run again, we have another board member who's just filling in, Bob King was filling in for a vacancy we had, and they said, why don't we wait till we have a new board? All of positions are filled with individuals who ran for election, and let's have, let's allow the board to get, know each other first, settle in a little, and then Jeff, why don't you raise the idea that we discuss it? So that's why I'm raising it tonight, I think the board has conceded, we've talked a lot, we've gotten to know each other, so I think we can have a, you know, meaningful discussion around it. So again, it's not for discussion tonight, I asked that it be put on the agenda, I will hand out to you one item, which I did, which is, and I modeled this after others around this, so if we were to decide to do this, you have to have a policy or a procedure on it, you know, how does one go about getting on the agenda, what are they allowed to talk about, what are they not allowed to talk about, and, and how do you manage it? I modeled this after what the select board does, and some other committees across the community do, so you can take one, there's one for the office. I think, if I remember correctly, if I get confused, LeAnn and Ralph, an early edition of this I shared with you, just so you were aware of it, so that's, that's my one item.
We, we have some version of, and not to go on and on about it, but some version, we do have rules and procedures on, on the 20th, so this fits in nicely with it. So we already slated it.
Rules and proceed, so the document that's called Planning Board Procedure and Regulations?
Mm-hmm.
Is on the docket on the 20th?
Yep.
Anything in specific or particular that you put it on there for?
To just cross the, adding the public hearing information.
Okay.
And then to strike the information about how the board reorganizes.
Okay.
Because it's inconsistent with the charter.
Yeah, and maybe you talked about it in the past, I apologize, I missed that.
No, that's fine.
I was just curious what we, I, so we can be ready to discuss it. Thanks, that's all I had, thank you. So that'll fit nicely.
Yep, no, absolutely.
Anyone else? I will ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I move to adjourn.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
Let me see if I have you.
Okay.
Hello, thanks, how you doing?
Do support it, yeah. No, no.
Sweet man, she is.